We call this meeting of the Rundle Planning Board to order. Today is January ninth, two thousand twenty. It is seven oh six P M. We're in the M L day elementary school. I'll start with a low call.
Mike Hayne.
Oh, great.
Jamie Lowey.
Susan Rock.
Rich Gannon.
Jens Bergen.
Tab Delinck.
Okay, we have before us, we need approval of the agenda. Time for public comment, approval of the minutes of December twelfth. New application, Du Bois Automobile Salvage Conditional Use Renewal. Item number two, B D F Holdings has asked us to table their visit with us tonight. And then we have a zoning amendment, the Rundle Grange zoning amendment. We'll get an update on where we stand with that. Other business, and then we'll go on.
Well, we also have that on business.
Right, under other business, we have a few things, but it's not listed here in terms of what, yeah. Some of the zoning amendments and subdivision priorities that we had looked, well, things that we had looked at, and we have a list that we need to prioritize in terms of what goes first.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Public comment, that time of the day, when you gentlemen are welcome to make a comment on anything that is not on the agenda. Hearing none, we will close the public comment. We will go to the approval of the minutes for December twelfth, two thousand nineteen.
You read American iron right now.
Yep.
Um, there's some corrections on the findings of fact for the, um, overbridge.
Yeah, there were a couple corrections.
Right.
And they're, they're in red, but Ted, I was relying on you a little.
Those ones are in red.
Yeah, the sections that are in red, I either was reading for addition or her additional or correct, correcting wording from the document.
Actually, those corrections are on the previous.
For overbridge, it was regarding the setback of the, um, no prison, yeah, the no cut zone at the driveway portions of each of the lot, and the correct wording for that.
And then it says Davis Con, not Duck Pond.
Did I write, did it wrong?
No, that's, it's the order, the order is, here it is.
There's the overbridge. Directions, I, um, that, um, in the findings of fact, basically put, um, that reference that Clinton makes to Duck Pond is actually was made a funds of one of the conditions of approval.
Okay.
So that was turned to page, I don't think six. At the very end, it was, that was item number fifteen regarding the setback story. It's all on the notice of decision here, I'll give you a copy.
Okay.
Basically, number fourteen included that, that's what she was trying about what that setback was. It said, the permission to cut hazardous trees must be granted by the Rundle Code Enforcement Officer prior to removal. The no cut zone is defined as the front yard setback of each lot by overbridge terrace excepting the driveway interest not exceeding twenty-five feet. That's exactly how much. Number fifteen, that, that took it from seven A and made number fifteen, the label Duck Pond should be corrected to Davis Con on the record subdivision point. Okay? Give you a copy of that, that's the changes to that to the fact. So we hurried that in, that's how that should be changed.
So we, we'll need to.
And I can correct that in the back out too.
We approve it as amended, yeah.
Yeah, we can approve it as amended, and then you can just kind of.
Yeah, either way.
And was there anything on American, well, on aim? Are we done with the overbridge?
We're done with overbridge, now is there, yeah, that's a good question, is there anything on aim?
She included the, the test results from that.
I think I have that in red as well.
Yes, I'm in red as well. That was all I ever amended to the.
Yeah, I believe that was.
Well, there was the.
Also, you made it, wasn't additionally made.
And number eleven, that the applicant has submitted.
A two million dollar liability.
Right, one million for occurrence, two million annually for accidental occurrences.
And there may have been additional language for Ted on that as well, how he ordered it.
Number eleven.
Overbriefing.
Yeah, on page nine.
On page one.
Yeah.
Cause I know Ted made specific notes on that one.
Yeah, I will have that here. Yep, there is, so you approve the liability, which is named out of one hundred thousand dollars per instance, two hundred thousand dollars.
No, a million.
It says a million.
A million, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, right, and two million, that's better.
That's, that's exactly how, how the policy is.
Okay.
Okay. So that would be, that's the additional to me, right?
Yeah, I thought there was a, there was more to it, that's why I.
That's why you put the, the goss, it was that simple. Cause that's what's recorded.
Okay.
We need a, a motion to accept as amended.
Um, we accept the minutes as amended?
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the amended minutes, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. New applications, first item of this on the agenda. Du Bois Automobile Salvage Conditional Use Renewal. A proposed application to renew an existing permit to continue operation of an existing eighty-five thousand square foot plus or minus automobile salvage area on three point six acre site located at two Irving Road, tax map nineteen, lot six in the R four district. Du Bois Livestock Incorporated is the applicant. Welcome, gentlemen. We, I can't say we, I have an issue, there's no map. We don't have a map. And there were a couple of other things, I believe, that were missing on the application.
She did send it up, Tim, and you said you lost it, you said if you couldn't find it back.
I didn't, I said, we did.
You told them that you were gonna get it out of the file, then?
No, I didn't say that, I said, I need maps, I need the maps and the, and the ten copies.
I think that's what she said, if not, we would have one, but I can get one, I can get one, that's what I had.
Well, I would recommend saying, schedule the sidewalk, and you provide the maps for the sidewalk, that work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the checklist, right?
Yeah, the checklist.
And the checklist on the application needs to be taken care of.
And the abutters labels.
That's correct, and the labels for all of the abutters, so that we can notify them that the permit's up for renewal. If you could get off, we'll, we'll schedule the sidewalk, if you can get all of that for us.
Yeah.
When we do the sidewalk, that'll be fine, but if, if, if we don't have it, we're not gonna do the sidewalk.
Yeah, we can get it to you sooner than we need.
Okay.
All right.
You should send it in with everything, yeah, that got lost, I come in.
All I know is that we don't have it.
Yeah.
So the question is, when do you want to do the sidewalk?
Yes, that is the question.
What are we doing on Saturday mornings to?
We have to do it in sets.
Yeah, because it's still, still.
Have to do Saturday mornings. Can't do it this Saturday, cause they don't have enough, they don't have enough.
Yeah, we're looking at.
You know this time.
What the, the following Saturday?
Oh, no, that's.
Martin Luther came to.
No, 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 I'm thinking the following Saturday is what, the eighteenth?
An extended weekend?
And that?
Yes, because Luther.
Tomorrow.
Right.
Okay.
So, how about after that, the Saturday after that?
What they did then?
I could, I can do the eighteenth early in the morning, but I'm not sure if I'm available on the twenty-fifth.
When's our next meet, is the lunar new year?
The twenty-third.
That really has no bearing on my attendance or not.
I can make it on the twenty-fifth.
What? I cannot make it on the twenty-fifth, I have an eight o'clock appointment.
Well, I probably could make it on the eighteenth, are you gonna be around on the eighteen?
Yeah, I can, I can do the eighteenth, I just, the twenty-fifth, I have an eight o'clock appointment.
Well, we need three now, right, not just a Saturday.
At least three, like they get everybody, but at least three, can you do it? Eighteen? Um, I crystal ball ain't shining yet. Assuming there's no snow.
Eight, eight thirty?
Jamie said he could do it. I can do it, Susan can do it, and we'll, we'll have at least the three of us that are available. The ends can come out, maybe yes.
Potentially.
Potentially.
So can we make it eight thirty? Eight thirty, is that okay?
Eight, eight thirty on the eighteenth, would that work for you guys?
Yeah.
Weather permitting, too much.
Yeah, weather permitting.
You can't do what you need to do, eight thirty.
Eight thirty on the eighteenth.
Now, I wanna make sure what paperwork you guys need again.
We need the, we need the map.
Map.
We need the checklist, so if there's stuff that you want us to wave, you know, to go through that whole process. And we need the labels to mail out to all of the abutters.
We lost everything.
Oh, yeah.
And also, if in the event between now and then, uh, at least a path to walk down, so that we're not turned around and slow showing.
Yeah, we usually gotta roll down through.
I've just, I've just, I know you have, I know you have equipment, but if it's, if it's, yeah, you did it. If it's kinda, I don't care, if you take the, the, the roller, and roll it out, you know.
We'll do the road alongside of, yeah, we'll usually go there.
Yeah. Usually we're, we're walking down.
If you get that stuff to board, to Ted beforehand, he'll just, he'll let me know.
Yeah, we'll try to get it, so we have it.
Okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen, we'll look forward to seeing you. Oh, we got a.
Yeah.
On the.
Yeah. Yeah. So move that we have the sidewalk at eight thirty A M. on January eighteenth.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to the sidewalk, January eighteenth, eight thirty. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Now it's official.
Orange, we have to make a note in there to have that, the law is produced before or at sidewalk.
Yep.
Or, or at, that's why I was saying.
Make sure it happens, okay?
Right, submission on before.
Um.
But yes.
I will send them a notice.
Yep. Send them a note reminding, and it, again, if we show up and that paperwork is not here, I'm leaving.
Uh, now sidewalk.
We've done that before, no, last, no, last time we had popping notes there.
That's true, we did.
Yes.
Yep.
We did request it this time.
I brought the coffee, I had a thermos.
Yeah, no, you had a, you had a dummy thing.
Okay. Come on. That's, oh my god.
We did it, we.
Oh, Rundle Grange?
Okay, the next item has been tabled, and the item after that is Rundle Grange. We have a workshop.
Why?
The next meeting's on the twenty-third.
Scheduled, right?
We have a scheduled meeting on the twenty-third to do, to do the workshop.
Is there also a public hearing? Did I see that in the minutes correctly?
That we should have a public hearing, the objects that is to have a public hearing is to, is to really, not so much for the application as it is to feel out what the, the property owners and the residents feel about the idea of.
I thought that was a workshop.
Cause they really, there's nothing in here about a public hearing.
But it's still, it's a public.
They say public.
All of the, with all the. The question is, when do you want to do that?
No, we have it scheduled, they say.
That's what I'm saying.
On the docket.
It says here, it's on, on the twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
On the twenty-third. Is it due on the twenty-third?
That's what we decided last time.
Okay.
Definitely, yeah.
I got a working application coming to us on the twenty-third, the twenty-third's not available, is it?
We said we were going to do that, and also you were gonna post it on the town website, and there are some people we'd get out to know about it ahead of time. So we would at least have some kind of turnout.
Right.
Well, whether, no, what I'm gonna do is, if I ever seen a person, I've seen a property, there's only like twenty-three properties in that whole district. What's you do it that way, and I'll tell you, if you do it out too, too, too far out, they forget. They forget about it, they don't come. Two weeks is actually almost probably, probably ten days is about how you wanna do it.
You may have somebody spur other people.
That's what I'm hoping.
No, because as we were, I was speaking off record before, or discussing, you have another property down there that had restricted use, which is not being used at all. At one time, it was a daycare or anything else, which is formerly, uh, forefathers. That might be it, also another avenue to do something down there.
But doesn't Bob Zucco own that property?
Yes, he does.
But it, there's a daycare there now?
No.
No.
No, 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 at one time.
Used for storage, as a storage shed.
Yeah, he's got all the storage stuff.
But at one time or another, before this even became a town center, a town corner center or wherever else on it, there were so many different restrictions down there that.
Well, you couldn't do it, it was, it was a residential district.
Correct.
So now it's a, it's a, it's a business district, so the only problem is that for a lot of the properties there, they'd have to extend water in order to take advantage of this, because the water line only goes certain ways up Rundle Road. It doesn't turn the corner and lock, lock out. It was always meant to also be an impetus for people to actually consider developing by extending services.
Mm-hmm. Yes, but coming out.
The water line comes from the golf course.
Yeah.
Right.
And it goes up, how far up Rundle Road?
It goes up to, I know at least it goes to there, I think it almost goes to Hays.
See, I didn't go.
I didn't think it went that far.
May not.
No, no, because.
But I know it goes to the, I know it goes to the.
Bicycle shop.
It goes to bicycle shop.
Yeah.
See, I didn't.
That, I didn't think it went that far even.
It does.
I didn't, I didn't think it made the corner, cause I know it went, it crossed the brook and went over to the, to the driving range, but I didn't think it had ever.
No, that went outward.
When you say cross, when you say cross, that means it's coming from Canterbury.
Yeah, it came out of Canterbury and went.
Comes out of Canterbury, yeah.
Went, went across the brook, we, when, when they were doing the driving range, we had them put in a hydrant.
Yeah, but there's a hydrant.
Go underneath the brook, you can call.
But there's a hydrant right there on the corner.
There is no sewer.
Ready?
So, hold on, let me, let me get this straight.
There's a hydrant on the corner coming off the, the, that road going down to the golf course. That's right there, but I didn't think it, it came down any farther.
From Kennedy Bunk?
Cause I don't think it went to Bed and Breakfast down there.
Yeah, I, I.
So that's where I was, okay.
It comes from the port.
That's, that makes sense to me, but when you said Kennedy Bunk, I was, I was trying to figure out where in the hell.
I was thinking K K W, it's a K K W one.
No, I assumed that, yeah.
And it's coming from the port.
Yes, but I didn't think it went down to the Grange, because.
Apparently it does, and if it doesn't, then they got a problem, cause then they're doing this for no purpose whatsoever. If there's a, it's my understanding, it does go by the Grange, and there's capitol. I could be wrong about that, but why would these guys be doing this if they don't have water access? They know they've gotta have public water or public sewer, and they don't have public sewer. They have a very large septic system.
Are we sure that they're aware that they need public water?
I, it says so in the ordinance, and I sat down with Bob Metcalf, and I told him this, and I sat down with Mr. Fitzgerald and told him, if you don't have public water or public sewer, it's a no go. And he recognizes that he has, he says, I can do the public water, and I can do the reduced or the increased density, which is one unit per twenty thousand square feet, cause I have the public water, but, you know, I want a higher density because I have something better than sewer, I have a septic system, a very large, well-designed septic system. That is designed for a large daycare center. It has not been used for that purpose, there's only four apartments and the bicycle shop, which is actually a single-family home, and that, and that shop. So he wants that, he wants that increased density, um, provided, you know, of course, that you have the septic capability to take care of it on site. And the, you know, I was discussing this with the code enforcement officer today. The, the thing that really restricts you on, on density is the ability to get a septic system in a well on one acre piece of property. You have to have a hundred-foot setback from the septic system to the well. If you have a water supply, that disappears, which means now you're gonna have a greater density. But we have, we really have two big, big issues that have to be discussed in this. First of all, the logistics of the ability to do that down there, there is adequate water to do that. You know, lots are big enough to be able to have a big enough septic system to do that down there. And the second is, is that a desirable use to have higher density residential in that particular area of town? Those are the two big logistical issues. For the residents, the issue is gonna be the same thing, probably the bigger issue is gonna be, is that acceptable use in that area, that higher density residential, almost apartment living in that particular area with the increased traffic that comes with that and the increased population?
Which, which of those?
Which of those two issues do you think we ought to tackle first? I'm asking that, cause I have an inclination.
The logistics is the issue, I think, without the logistics, none of this works. Without having water, adequate water, this doesn't work, but I, as I mentioned, if you do put this provision in, somebody might find it beneficial to actually extend the water line.
Well, this is.
And fire.
High-value land, too, and so, yeah.
Right, but this is low-income housing. Well, he's moderate in.
But we all know that, that market forces won't probably change.
Well, that's what he, I mean, he, apparently, he's an altruist, and he wants to develop residential, you know, apartments for workers in the port.
And it's a, it's a, it's a laudable goal, and it, maybe he can do that, but market price is.
Is that a lot of bull, the bull?
A lot of bull.
Oh, laudable.
Laudable.
Lot of bull.
Uh, one other thing.
I don't know the more, the more I hear about it, I, that's what I think it is.
The other thing is.
Hate to be a cynic.
If that's the case.
It's okay to be a cynic, because it, it's not a question of what his intentions or his motivations are. There will be those who will see it, there's an economic benefit.
Because ultimately, regardless of his laudable intentions, you know, once, once the zone is changed, then anybody can take advantage of it that has property down there. So it's not, it's not just solely for this project.
No, it's not, but the problem is that there will be limitations on that, because some of the lots are small, and some of the lots don't have best soils. Some of the lots also don't have the water or oil soil.
Well, it's such a high-value location, I mean, literally, it's in, it's at the nexus of going into the port, going down, get to Route one on Center Road, um, off of Rundle Road and Lock Cabin Road, I mean, it's just, it's, it's where everything is.
One, one thing we have to also consider of that coming down, if it isn't there, hydrant's gonna have to be put. And the second thing is also too, does the town have the capability, since the Grange is that big and high, for fire?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm just.
Yeah, yes, they do.
They do, because right down, just down the road on North Street is Canterbury Fire, Canterbury Port Fire, and they have a ladder.
Now, is there anything in an existing town around, meaning a budding town, that falls under that type of category for the same usage?
Well, Canterbury has, has higher density, that's for sure, they have higher density.
Is, okay.
But they also have sewer.
But not, but, but some of that area does not have sewer over there.
Oh, absolutely.
But I'm just using that.
There is no sewer in that area that I, that.
Correct.
That is available.
But what I'm just using that as a guideline also, where there is no sewer. And, and possibly water or no water, okay, to see what their density calculations are also. I'm using that as a thought.
Well, so this is something that is probably gonna be addressed when we have our workshop, cause all these questions are gonna come up again.
If we have these questions already there, and we're not pulling a straw out and nobody can answer anything.
I think what you're saying is actually very valuable, to be prepared with.
I thought Canterbury Port was considering some sort of higher density, um, right next to Reed Lane.
They are, they've got, they're looking at.
Pretty complex, they, they bought a big old parcel for, big old chunk of honey.
They have a big project they want to put out by the school, I believe.
Oh, is that the heritage housing?
Yes, the heritage housing, because they recognize the same problem, that, that they cannot, that the existing services, they cannot keep employees because there's no housing.
I thought it was just down the road of this, though, right?
It's not that far away, no.
Well, I'm thinking different, that same, the same road, going into the port, almost across from the fire station.
Yes, it seems to me too, that given, given the proximity of Canterbury Port to the Townhouse Corner District, whatever, whatever difficulties or concerns might arise because of this, it seems to me that they would be, at least in part, pushed onto the other town in some respect. For example, I mean, it's not just the traffic, it's not gonna just be Rundle's problem. And it seems to me that, um, there should also be some basis for some cooperation between the, um, towns or the utilities, given their proximity at that, at that juncture, too. And, you know, there's a lot of other parts of Rundle that I personally would rather not see subjected to development pressures from this kind of housing, just because that means they may not be open areas. They may be, they may not be available for the agri use. It seems to me a sensible place to put it, to allow it to flourish.
I think, I think the building itself would make a good use for this. My whole concern about this is how, how are the neighbors gonna react?
Well, that's always.
That's, that's, to, to me, that's, that's one of the, probably the premier issue that I would be looking at, saying, I'll, I'll vote against it because we've got twenty-three houses and eighteen of them think it's a bad idea.
You know, um, it seems to me that it's, you're not gonna get a majority against it because of the effect it's gonna have on property values.
I, I agree.
It's gonna be, no matter what you do, there's never any project anywhere that doesn't have somebody with an envy attitude toward it.
But I, I, I think in this case, a lot of the problems that we've had in the past are getting the neighbors and the neighborhood involved in going and wanting to say, yeah, we think that this is a good idea. That's the purpose, to have that workshop, so that they can come down and we can, if, if they show up in droves going, I think this is a horrible idea.
We got a message.
We, we got the message, if they, if they show up and they say, yeah, it's, we like it, we got a message. If they don't show up, as far as I'm concerned, we got the message, they don't care.
Correct. Agreed.
Yeah.
One other thought is, how much is this gonna impact the school system? And how many units are there gonna be?
That's always the issue with higher density housing, is how, how, what's the, what's the fiscal impact of such a, such a proposal on the municipality and its ability to provide the services in time and fashion?
And these are rentals.
These are rentals.
Oh, these are rentals.
So, they're not property tax.
They might be condos for all we know, it doesn't matter if they're rentals or they're condos.
Still no tax right.
Either way, they, they could be, depending on what, what kind of unit is being marketed, they could in fact be a year-round facility for, for families. Question is, would a family live down there, and let's say, two-bedroom apartment in that area? This guy's not going anything greater than a two-bedroom apartment.
Two-bedroom.
Or fifty-five would be good.
That's right. Fifty-five would be good. Also remember that under a. Fifty-five would be. Also remember that under a current ordinance, we automatically give a, a density bonus to two double units for fifty-five and older community. The current conditions, you have to make it work. But if you had, let's say, even at twenty thousand right now. Even at twenty thousand square feet, you could have, um, a density of, for a fifty-five and older building. Could have a quarter acre or ten thousand square feet per unit, which isn't that far from what they're asking for right now. They're looking for what, eight thousand, I think, eight thousand per year. So we're talking about ten thousand per year. It's not much different. If you do a fifty-five and older.
So do we know how they arrived at the eight thousand square foot?
I actually don't have a clue. I think that.
I think we should find that out too, because.
Well, I'll find out from the architect, because he's already got an architect coming in and talking to us. He talked to the chief today about sprinkling system, because they're gonna have to sprinkle this building. Cause the, cause of the density of it.
I'd like to know how they arrived at eight thousand square feet as opposed to something.
It's a good question, ask Bob. But what we're going to tell Bob is you're gonna have a presentation that you're gonna give to these folks on this particular proposal. I'm not sure the playboard necessarily is going to sit here and, and just be the target here if you will.
If, if he wants to do this, he has to show up and present it to the neighbors that show up. That's what I'd say. This is, this is what I'm looking to do. I can say to you, the guy wants to, to make eight thousand square foot living arrangements in the old Grange building. That's the extent of what I know. He's got, he's gonna have to answer a whole bunch of other questions. I don't know what his target market is. Is it, is it gonna be dishwashers in Kennebunk Port? I don't know. Is there any of that information?
Yeah.
One question to ask you possibly as a thought, Ted. His on development, where they have single. Single family. What is the square footage of those units? Cause those were made small units.
At Bartlett Farm? There it's.
Not on Bartlett's Farm. This is, uh, Old Post Road.
Oh, yeah, I know the one you mean.
Yeah, because it.
The little, the little Roaring Brook at Roaring Brook. Oh, those are tiny.
They are.
But I'm saying that's the same idea what they're talking about.
Probably nine, nine hundred foot thousand square foot.
No, they're bigger than that.
Are they?
Yeah, because it turned out it had a living room, kitchen, bedroom and everything else and there was.
I'm not sure.
Like, it was like a.
They're tiny.
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure that it is much bigger than nine hundred square.
I mean, I wasn't here when you guys approved that, but.
That was.
Driven down.
Yeah, I, I wasn't here either.
Cause that's, uh, they had to redo it all for golf brooks and everything else. They had to put super, uh. Flood, uh, gateways in and everything else. Off of the old post road.
Yep, on Golf Mill Brook.
Uh-huh.
On Golf Mill Brook, they had to put in tie gates or something like that.
Oh, they had to, because that flooded out, they had to turn on engineer bridges and everything over it.
That's interesting.
And that was done by his son before.
Yeah, I, I'm aware of that.
And they only could use part of it because they couldn't come across the railroad tracks. They couldn't go under the railroad tracks and everything else. So I'm just trying to give you a.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what, I know these guys are looking probably to put six to ten units in the Grange. And it's all gonna depend on what they're gonna do. If they did fifty-five and older, they might be able to do it right now. If we were, you know, they still have to meet the septic capabilities that. And Jim Logan gave us a, a report on the capabilities of that septic system that exists. And the issue is, um. You can go through the zoning warrants or you can go make the fifty-five and older community. Remember this planning board. Back when I arrived here, you had just approved, um, that Grange Hall. The building in the back had eight units in it, not just four, but eight units. And the Grange Hall had been approved for twenty-one incubator business spaces.
Correct. That's why they, that's why they put in the larger septic system, because the, the, uh, nursery was going out. Nursery was disappearing. And they were putting that larger, in the playground area, which was all the new septic system.
That sounds like a much, potentially much greater kind of intensive use for incubator businesses.
I think it was only gonna be fifteen, fifteen gallons per person and that kind of is.
Yeah, cause it was, it was basically gonna be a single-person office, yeah, a couple hundred square foot, one-person office.
Ah, or two, it was fifteen gallons per person, I remember that. And but at the same time, you had a dormitory back there with eight, eight units.
Yeah, but then.
Then the owner at the time decided to downgrade that, take away those eight units because, and combine them into, into four, because they, they were good for students, but she wanted to make it market-based. And then she, she was gonna sell the, the building, the first building to a conduit and sell it to, uh, Kennebunk Port Bike Shop. And now there's a new owner from that original. Actually, it's not new, he's, he's been doing it for, Mr. Fitzpatrick's been in it for a while now.
Well, I think it'll be interesting to hear what they have to say.
Well, it'll be, it most, yeah, and. So we've, we've got it scheduled.
Do we know that they have water in the building?
I don't know that. They had it. I know he's saying does, I know he says he, he does have it, cause he, otherwise, we, we do it as exercise, cause he doesn't have it.
So what, so where.
Raymond told me once he had, they had public board.
So where do we go from here?
We, we have the workshop and then after the workshop, depending on how that goes, he, he's gonna have to submit an app, an application. Well, no, we have to work on doing the zone change.
We have to work on the zone.
If, if, if we agree with him, we need to work on.
Well, we'll see the reaction, the twenty-third.
Twenty-third?
Yep.
So we'll see how people, if people come out and what they have to say about it too. Take the community's temperature.
If, if they like it, we can work on the zone change. If they don't like it, then he's gonna have to, if he wants to do it, he'll have to go through the petition process.
Yeah.
Right now, I have, I have to tell you though, that I do have, um. Three, four applications coming in the twenty-third. And do I pick them off? Can I make it just for the twenty-third?
Depends on what they are. Army.
It's gonna be these guys, number one.
They've been already been on the schedule, so.
Number two is, will be B D, um, um, B D F. They're gonna, they're doing a new subdivision out there. Third one will be, uh, DuBois. They're doing a subdivision out off of Irving. And the fourth is, uh, do you remember?
These guys are doing a subdivision off Irving?
Yeah.
Okay.
And anybody, uh, anybody, there's nobody here. Marty, remember Rundle Keep?
Rundle what?
Rundle Keep. On, right across from Bud LeBros' family's enclave there.
Yeah.
Their back. There will be somebody in the same application.
When did all of this stuff come in?
Today. Oh, there's a fourth, a fifth. I forgot about this one too. This is a request for modification and improved subdivision.
From?
Um, from the Homers Association on Elizabeth Way. Otherwise.
Known as Mr. Luckey.
Mr. Luckey.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Uh, what we have there is a, uh, a house that's been built and they did the, um, Class D survey, not before, but after they built the house. It found they're two feet too close to the road.
Jeez.
So they wanna move the road. They wanna move the right of way, not the road, but the right of way. They wanna move the right of way over two feet.
Uh, question, if I remember.
It's not a complete application. I don't even have permission from the property owners. Who owned the property on the other side of the road?
Well, if it's not a complete application, we're not gonna deal with it.
Yeah, closing they wanna do.
Can we go, can we just talk about Grange for one second?
Sure. I, I was just, I was just trying to lay out what the lineup is for the next one.
I think we should think about making a zone change for one, I know you brought this up before, for one project. I mean, is, is that the, the stance that we wanna start taking that people come with a single project? And we change the zoning for a single project? I mean, and.
And that's a question the board has to answer.
Would it not be cleaner for the board to let them go through the petition process? And take us out of being in the position of having to make decisions on one-offs as they come to the board? Because I, I think it's a, it's a slippery slope, because then everybody has a cause. And they all want it to be considered, you know, as a sing, singular item. And I just think it could be a problem.
We know the problem.
That, that's a good point, but this isn't gonna, if, if we go through with this, this is not a zone change for that one piece of property. We're gonna have to say that this is available to the entire.
Right, to the whole.
All twenty-three.
Townhouse.
Families down, down in the district. If it would, if it were just for them, the answer's no.
Yeah, it's less like spot zoning.
And if you recall, we've actually entertained many projects. Some changes based on the project, because we don't have a contract zone here. We tell the lot to a contract zone. So consequently, the cottages was a zone change that.
They were the second one. The first one was Kate Spatter.
Kate Spatter was the first one, the second, although, and there's been other ones since then, so, preceding that. There's been other zone changes preceding that. There's a zone change that allowed that, that it's been scampering.
Well, so I think when we have our workshop, we should make it abundantly clear that if this zone change goes through, it impacts all of the.
Absolutely.
Lots that are in that district.
That's why everybody from the district would be invited.
Okay.
I would, I would also argue, I think it's a, a very good point, that we really should be involved, anybody who wants to make a zone change. I think it's a lot better than the petition process, because the petition process hip checks both the planning board and the complaint committee out of the whole equation. And that, that could be, you know, remember that there's no requirement in the petition process that whatever zone change is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And so somebody could put a nuclear, do a zone change for a nuclear power plant. Okay? The planning board has nothing to say about, and they can stack the meeting as special town meeting, because when you have a petition, it automatically requires a special town meeting. And we could have a whole bunch of things shoved down our throats that the town doesn't want.
Okay.
So I think the best way is for us to always encourage taking on anybody, listening to any proposal. And then making a reasonable judgment based on the comp plan and based on the, the goals of the community, the goals of the planning.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, at, at bottom, it, not only does it provide an additional administrative remedy, but it provides a check.
Yeah.
Against, um. Lay action that might not, that might be misguided.
Exactly. And we've had action, lay action, which they've asked for certain things and we've guided that in a different direction. A perfect example is they wanted to make a change in the business district to allow RV parks. And this board moved Joe Powellini towards the concept of making a permanent stick-built structures out there that would result in a much better tax advantage for the community. So instead of RVs, that was originally approved as an RV park. Look what it is now. Look at, look at the, look at the incredible. The incredible difference in the valuation for this community. That's beneficial not only for the people who live there and take, and partake with that, that facility. But also for this community and the revenue that we're getting here. And that's, in lieu of being able to have large industrial development, that's, that's a godsend.
Yeah, for sure.
Now, coming back to your road thing. What we were just discussing.
Oh, Elizabeth Way, I'm sorry.
Okay, but the fact is, was it not? Even though after everything was approved or anything else, they had to come back after everything was done to put the markers in.
Yep.
Because they were not done before.
Yep. They put the marker, they put the pins in.
We should talk about.
It doesn't mean they, what happens is that sometimes when people don't have a surveyor out there, just like frankly speaking, having done the survey work and been on a team that did. You know, Class D's all the time before the permit, as part of the permit process for the bank. That people don't understand, when you have two pins and you've got a road that has a curve in it, that's not a straight line between the two pins. There's a curvature that matches the curvature of the road. The right of way does have a curve in it that matches the curve of the road. That was not taken into account. It was a straight line. It was assumed, assumption that curve, uh, that the pins, uh, were the property line and not basically the chord of that arc. So they didn't know their geometry.
So we'll wait and see what happens with this one.
Well, they're gonna make a pitch that we make this change. My first, my first argument to them is you're doing this on people's land and you know, I have no indication of where we should even do it in the first place.
We should talk about this in due course though, right?
Right, you should talk about this in due course. But the point that I was trying to make was that, obviously, I don't wanna do that without the app here.
And, but at this point, it's not, it's not even a complete application, so.
But the other ones, the other ones are all pre-apps. Um, the two subdivisions are pre-apps.
Those'll go fairly, fairly quickly.
Well, they're, they're asking for one, they want to reinstate what was originally approved. The subdivision disappeared because they had not built it within the two-year period that we were required to do so. So they're bringing back the same subdivision. It's a cluster subdivision, but there's two lots in it that are not clustered. And have direct access to, to the road. And that's the issue I think they're gonna be asking, whether we would allow that or whether they have to cluster those two lots and incorporate that as part of the cluster subdivision, which we mean that subdivision would have to be redesigned. So, okay. Uh, and then the other one is, as I, you know, we have this one, which is really a, just a renewal issue and, um, what was the other one?
You said Liberty, uh, they were gonna, subdivision, they were gonna do it.
Even on, even on this one, we're gonna have a discussion of the sidewalk and then we're gonna schedule a publication. It's, that should be relatively quick. So I don't think that there'll be a problem having that one. We might, maybe one other. I don't think we wanna have all four of them. Well, we're only gonna have. Four. Cause Elizabeth Way isn't ready for prime time.
Well, if we don't think there, maybe we can alert them at the beginning of the meeting that we might not get through the whole agenda. So people who are at the tail end that don't wanna wait, we can schedule them for the next meeting.
Following the meeting.
Right.
And we might wanna do that with, uh, with pre, pre-applications.
Yeah.
So.
You might, I mean, obviously they wanna get going, but, um.
Right, but then we don't get the complaint that we made people sit there through the whole meeting and we didn't get it.
Yeah, I understand.
So.
That's, that's, we're working out.
So the first is gonna be that.
We're probably gonna work about that now, you think.
So I will schedule them, is in other words, what you're telling me is schedule them for after that workshop.
Yes.
I would do that.
And, and when, when you schedule them, let them know that the workshop is taking place. They may voluntarily say, okay, we'll do it the, two weeks later. Or they can come and sit and wait until the workshop's, the, if, the workshop's gonna be one of these things.
We never know who's gonna be here, if anybody.
Twenty minutes, it could be done in two hours.
Yeah, I mean, we had, remember when we did this before for the Townhouse District, because some, you're allowed people away.
Right, yeah.
I don't know how many would be away, because that's more residential downtown than, but there was some of them that were away.
Okay, so the next item that we're looking at is other business.
Right.
And you have before you a punch list. What we have to do is decide what's in here that, the, and prioritize it. So that we can go through and say, what do we wanna work on first?
So do you want us to take this home and look at it and?
Discuss it.
And organize it or, no, no, I just meant, do you, do we have, um, Rich, do you have a, an idea of how, what the order of go should be?
I do not, because when you look at these, they're all items that need, well, let me rephrase that. The noise ordinance change. Has got to be one of the earlier items so we get going.
And that's what I was getting ready to ask, is what, I mean, I presume whoever put this punch list together.
It was me.
Has an idea of what is most important, you know, most critical to, to priori, prioritize highest. Versus other things, you know, just looking down through the list, I saw movie theaters. versus other things, you know, just looking down through the list, I saw movie theaters. You know, is that really a high priority item? And maybe it is, and I just don't understand why.
Well, and that's a very good point, if I may, Mr. Jim, I want to, Jimmy has brought up. And that was, the subdivision stuff, really, the subdivision, actually, you don't love these guys, but we really need to look this over. We really need to look our subdivision, because it's very blurry, and it's a little out of date in some ways. There's emphasis on certain things, that there's such, there's such an incredible emphasis on brimstone pond, which is becoming quickly less, it might not even be a great pond before too long. There's a lot of emphasis on very, very weak land preservation techniques we're supposed to do in the R, in the R four district, that we haven't codified in, even in the land use ordinance. The issue of roads, the issue of subdivision roads. We have conflicts between the Rundle street construction ordinance and certain requirements that are in the subdivision ordinance. And we've got some pretty, pretty unrealistic requirements for certain things like underground utilities, sidewalks, bike lanes, street trees, and buffering standards for brimstone pond that need to be reserved, need to be reworked. We've talked about things about visual quality preservation standards that are in the subdivision ordinance that aren't gonna work, quite frankly. They need to be more designed in general. So there's a lot of stuff we could do in here, and the planning board needs to, we need to take it apart. And the land use ordinance, yeah, the land use ordinance, I think I would elevate always, I tried to keep, give them all in order of they are in the ordinance, but they kind of fall apart in the end. I would say the stuff up front from nine, three, twelve, which is clustered housing on up, I think is actually pretty important stuff we really need to attack. We keep kind of dodging some of these. The stuff below is all, frankly speaking, conditional uses that we are, that we haven't done any conditional use standards for yet in our land use ordinance. We specified that this conditional uses, but we don't have any standards. We have no standards for daycare centers. We have no standards for movie theaters. Outdoor sales and sawmills and log yards might feel a little more important. Taverns might feel a little more important. But they could be elevated in the list. But, you know, aquaculture, I'm not getting a lot of pressure for that. Artists and crafts and studios, those are almost common sense things. Automobile service stations, that's a little bit more, that's a design issue, on how you do an automobile service station. That's a, if you can look at design standards, you guys are looking for, what do you want?
I don't think we have to worry about a convention center anytime soon.
You never know.
You never know.
Well, there is one we will, there will be coming at us, and that is another zoning change or zoning amendment that is gonna be requested of us, and that I had a call from Colin Edison. Okay, sees some eyes here, okay? Just looking to see the references there.
I think central main power in New York City.
Right.
I thought it, I was there.
Yeah, I hate to pay your bills, but you think they're bad, try nine, nine more, nine or a lot, they're worse, they're obsolete. But in any case, they, they're going to be proposing, make the presentation soon on solar farms.
Which one?
Solar farms.
Solar farms.
Solar farms. Janet Mills' proposal has released.
We should, we should send them to talk to those guys.
That would be a little cleaner. Yeah, but there's only one problem. It'd be a three-phase line in order to run the solar farm. You have to have a three-phase power line. The one, the what we have, the ones that are on Route one, and the ones that extend from Benford Crossing up to.
Kate's Park.
Yeah. So actually, our entire ARD is eligible.
That's not that far from them.
But a three-phase power line is not cheap to extend.
Con Ed's a, they're a quite fairly robust operation. That'd be a way to clean things up.
By the time you write that sentence out, they will have made enough money to do it.
There's enough, and there is also another outfit that I, we have not connected yet. One of the engineering firms has called me, I've called them, but I haven't played phone tag. But it's a different outfit. Con Ed guy says, oh yeah, there's another guy out there.
So we should. To answer Susan's question, I would, I would start with where it says multi-family.
Right, and that's where.
And go up to the sawmill section there, because those are, yeah, age-restricted communities, we've done. We may not have done it well.
Oh, yeah, we've done it all.
We created over fifty-five communities.
We can, we don't have any standards for it.
Okay.
Yeah, we did have one.
Yeah, we have, no, we don't have a standard.
Yeah, we did.
We did double it, that's all. And it's in multi-family, it's hidden.
Right.
It's a hidden, we talked about this before, is a hidden, you know how we have landmines? This is a confetti mine, it's a little mini mine.
But if I were looking.
It's a pond goal somewhere.
It's buried in the land use ordinance.
The stuff up in the subdivision, I think, is more important at this point.
The what?
The subdivision.
Question.
I think it's more important. We haven't reviewed the subdivision in twelve years, fourteen years?
Uh, two, yeah, yeah.
It's over fourteen years since we built it. We need to look at that.
The fact is, we still have not come down to the terminology, the zone of R three, R four, or R two and R three. Before you can go into residential districts, you have to know what it's gonna be.
Yeah, we have to address that.
I mean, before you could even try to play that, if they don't have it defined, we can't do anything about it. I think that's one of the first things that has to be defined along the way.
So are we marching down from, from top to bottom then?
That might, that might be the easiest way, is to just start with the subdivision fees and work our way down through.
The subdivision fee is easy, give it a.
Alright.
Well, what is it?
Well, it says it's seventy-five bucks a lot. The selectmen, what it needs to say is selectmen determine what the fee is.
That's right.
Okay, so that's an easy one.
That would be easy, we could, that's a, because the selectmen have told us, they get to set the fees, not us.
Shoreland zoning references need to be put in as a, as a factor. Because when they did this, when they did this on the subdivision, we didn't have much of a shoreland zoning ordinance on this town. We didn't identify anything on protecting, except for brimstone pond. That's why everything's on brimstone pond or anything. Because at the time, brimstone pond was a, that's an unfortunate symbol. Brimstone pond was a great pond, ten acres or more, and therefore had to be protected on shoreland, mandatory shoreland zone. Still does. It's not under a lot of threat, as you know, mainly because the land around it is very difficult. So, but we've expanded our shoreline zoning, and it's a lot more cogent than it used to be. A lot more of a presence than it was in the, when the subdivision was done. That, that can, alternative road designs for clustered development.
I think before we do that, we have to do the reconciliation of the street ordinance. Before we talk about designing anything in other sections, we have to make sure we agree personally.
Or are the selectmen gonna do that?
Or are the selectmen gonna do that? So we're gonna defer twelve point two?
So that would be two. So we can say one for the first two, right? That's one, that could be done very quickly.
Right, and the road standards reconciliation, we've been talking about reconciliation all over. The land use ordinances and the subdivision language to make sure everything is in sync.
My point on that one is that outside of the subdivision, whatever that, that street design ordinance says is, that's the law. That's what we have to obey.
Right, but.
But when it comes to subdivisions, we, right now, we have control of subdivisions and the way they look. But we should try to reconcile what's in the street designer ordinance, so that there's not a big conflict at some point.
Yes, I understand what you're saying, but I was talking about also reconciling all the language. So descriptions of the same thing that occurs in different places is actually.
That's pretty much the point, because it, it doesn't, it.
I mean, just as Chip is, you know, he talks about it all the time, that things as simple as a word change.
So how are we ranking, how are we ranking, are we using like one to three, or one to five, or?
However, number there are.
That's gonna take forever. That's not gonna be a good start.
Let's, let's get the first ten done, the first ten that we should work, and then go from there.
And defer the others.
And defer the others.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not saying we do the whole checklist, but I had to put a checklist and rank down for all of these. So if you felt that, my gosh, we gotta do cluster housing now, then that would be one.
I can give you the first three, in my opinion. The shoreline zoning references, the subdivision fee elimination, that's a quick, easy fix.
Yeah, I was gonna say that's one.
Right, that's one.
Do them all together.
For number two, we're looking at the road standards reconciliation and the alternative road designs for clustered subdivisions. And for number three, I'm looking at the underground utilities.
I would think that's gonna be part of twelve points.
Yeah, oh, okay.
I think that all sort of fits right in together.
Yeah, because if you're doing the road, you gotta be able to put the underground.
I mean, if I'm, if I'm thinking road, I'm thinking sidewalk, I'm thinking that whole design part of it.
I would like to see them do underground utilities, but I believe right now they're supposed to do sidewalks.
No.
Are they supposed to?
No.
I wonder why I thought they were supposed to, because I was willing to make a trade with them. Do underground utilities, we don't care about sidewalks.
We went through this.
Change to the, in the street construction standards. But that's why I actually had a trade with Ginger Hill on that, the underground utilities for sidewalks.
Yeah, I think the, Ted and I had had the discussion about underground utilities. And if you drive by a house and it's got power lines in front of it, it doesn't give you the same feeling as going by someplace that doesn't.
Oh, I totally agree.
And without, without having the power lines, it creates more of that rural, concert, rural character that we hear from, from the complaint all the time.
Without power lines?
Without the power lines, which is, which is.
It's very contrary, because most rural areas don't have underground power.
That's, that's true, but it gives, what it does, it gives them the open space, the feel that they want.
It makes it look more rural, even though it isn't.
But it makes sense also, bad weather, not that I have to raise.
And that's my thing, is I think we should try and promote underground utilities or push underground utilities, more or less just from a, from an emergency. Be practical versus, say, sidewalks where you can look at, you know, based on our road standards and then the widths of roads. I mean, unless you've got a, you know, two hundred lot subdivision, you're not gonna have a, it's not gonna be highly trafficked to require.
But we should, we need to be able to set standards, set thresholds of which, where it's appropriate. Instead of saying where it's appropriate, we should say, when you get to this level, you should have them.
Right.
Just like, we have, we have a very vague discussion in subdivision ordinance about when should you put in a community playground, you know, for, for a large new development. And it's really, and what happened the last time, quite frankly, was Hissong's project, and part of the farm's do, it had forty-two units in it. And they said, the planning board said, well, you don't have to build a playground, well, just give us fifteen thousand dollars.
See, I think, I think you should have a playground, if you have three units in a clustered subdivision, you should have a playground.
Depends on how big.
Okay, but it depends on the market, depends on the market. If you're, if you're selling into a bunch of families, and you, and you say something like, you know, from one to ten, you have to have one, you have to have one playground. Twenty-five and up, you have to have three playgrounds. Some kind of a standard that you can look at that, so that everybody knows, hey, you know, the one we just did.
Oak Ridge.
Oak Ridge. When he puts that other unit in, we should be looking at it going, that's so big, you need to have a playground.
But do you think young fam, people with young families are gonna be able to afford a four hundred plus thousand dollar home?
Which, I don't, I don't think they can. I don't think they can, but that's what's being sold right there right now.
But that's what I'm saying. I know, that's what I mean, they're not buying it.
Now you're going into another market area, another area I didn't even broach, but actually is in the complaint. And that's a discussion of requiring affordable housing in some places, of requiring a certain percentage of affordable housing in the project. Kennebuck does it.
And we could look at that and say, a certain percentage has to be.
Well, and we'll be working on that in a couple of weeks, in a way, right?
I mean, yeah.
So number three. How about twelve seven?
State lots?
Yeah.
I didn't have to do the state lots. A state lot's not necessarily there, but, well, right now, a state lot's is an escape clause. It's, you guys have.
We created it.
Yeah, we did. Well, the state lot's still a good idea. I still am a believer in.
About ten acres or more?
No, the problem that we're accounting with them, they actually do help. The problem we're encountering right now is that people are using it as a method of doing a division of property in which they don't use the access strip for the access. They actually use it as a way of getting legal frontage in a place where they couldn't get it any other way. Rundle's good example. Our new town hall, they had to put in an access strip for the ac land, basically. The ac land actually goes to a swamp. This project right here, if you recall, those of you who worked on this project, remember that. Well, what happened was they, the ball field didn't have, didn't have legal access. It was actually a floating lot. It had no legal access, and it could not get legal access out this way because it would have cut off CMP's little lot that extends up around the turnpike. There's an extension there, you cut across it with a, with a right of way, not a right of way, an access strip, which is a piece of property that would have cut the land in half, and it would have had an illegal lot. So actually, the, the legal access for the playground goes right down the center of that park there.
Yep.
It's not building. The point being that people are putting the access strip as a way of solving a land, an access issue. Often for existing lots, or existing floating lots or floating properties. Somebody that built two houses, because at one point, you could build multiple houses on a single parcel of land. Which nobody could sell, and somebody, when somebody got divorced, or somebody decided they were gonna move to Wisconsin, they couldn't sell the land. They couldn't sell the property, because it was part of a larger property, so what do you do? Now, your family compound's not a family compound, so we, it gets really messy. No, it got messy, it got really nasty. We got tired of, of young wives crying in our office.
If we're gonna look at that for number, twelve seven for number three, I think we need to look at five five at the same time. It's a requirement that a state lot access strips be used as the primary entrance.
So they should go together.
Yeah.
Okay, but where are you still gonna get your zoning for R two, R three, or whatever house?
I think that's really, besides a noise ordinance, I think that the rural conservation district, the rural residential district, and the suburban residential district, all of those things have to be deferred.
We'll make those collective decisions more.
Yep.
Well, what are we, we're gonna do something with the noise ordinance.
Right, but that's sort of like a standalone, but yes.
Right.
Noise and those three.
Is gonna be coming back to haunt us as soon as somebody decides they wanna put in a contract yard two, in the R four district.
Right now, I will tell you that many businesses are down, if we, I would apply that noise ordinance to, to basically Route one, or sections of Route eleven. I'd have a lot of businesses in one of those forms.
Right.
Because a sixty D B is a lot of conversation.
But then what, what happens on a street like a McChip Gay? And I think we should discuss the idea of who's there first, and if the houses are there first, and the contractor yard is there. and the contractor yard is there second, or subsequently, and they're the ones making the noise, as opposed to moving next door to a playground, or a, you know, s- some facility that makes a ton of noise and building your house there, and then complaining about the noise. I mean, I think order of go should have some sway in terms of how decisions are made.
And that is part of the, the conditions when you put in a noise ordinance.
Right, I totally agree, and all that goes in the new noise ordinance.
We've talked to Steven Ambrose, who was the audiologist for, for Stolten, and the reluctant audiologist for Stolten. And he's, he's done some work up in, in, uh, the window, where he was on a committee for that, and he has, he has a completely different way of looking at it, and we're gonna sit down and talk to him about that. Because the, the thing is that the noise ordinance that all of us love and embrace for thirty years in the state, comes from the D E P noise standards. That they use in their private, or saddle.
From what state?
State of Maine.
Now, why I'm saying that is because State of Maine, State of New York is sucking up to California and following all the other noises and other rules and regulations, because you just said, point blank, sixty's awful loud, but a legal exhaust system is ninety. You just had a running car.
And while, Marty, I will tell you, I'm not sure where the source of the, the site location noise ordinance came from. But that is the standard that is exercised by D E P, and everybody has adopted it in the State of Maine. It's in the model subdivision ordinance, it's in the model zoning ordinance. It's easy, because nobody knows, exactly, and that, and that's the problem.
I think five.
Five.
It neither, it neither protects residents, nor does it, nor does it protect business.
The noise will survive the noise.
Probably has no better.
What's, the districts.
We wanna, we wanna make noise ordinance to protect the people that need to be protected.
I think it sucks, right?
Oh, I thought that was number four.
I'm surprised they haven't started yet on trains.
I thought you said number four was that.
Our trains are regulated only by the Federal Railroad Administration.
They did it lighthouses.
So if that's number three, then number four is the, um, noise ordinance, and number five would be the districts.
Five is the districts?
So, and in the noise ordinances, I hate to say anything about California, but we should also consider hours of operation.
Oh, absolutely, we, we do right now, it'll be all. We, we do right now in that. Now, I have to tell you, I think right now are just the five that we have.
On a Sunday.
The five areas.
That's, that's enough to keep us busy.
They hold you to it.
Kind of agree.
So probably most of these.
Contractors can't build on a Sunday.
Oh, yeah, and then I, I know that.
You know, when a residential, get a larva in the area.
On his, uh, his request, you know.
Yep.
I'm sure he's gonna be coming in with a petition as well, so we're gonna have really, three different petitions.
If they bring it in with, as a petition, you know?
Not as a petition, he wants to work with the playground.
Okay, good.
Who are you talking about?
Well, we started with, with Mark Panet.
Okay.
Alan Shepard has contacted me, wants to do farm overlay district. He wants to do that, and he's.
Wants to do what?
He wants to write the farm, he wants us to help him write, work with him in writing a farm overlay district.
That's cool, great.
And should be a floating zone in the residential districts, where you meet qualifications, you get, you get recognized as a farm overlay district. And, uh, you can do a lot more things than you could, we'll have standards. But it'll allow, something, somebody like Mark Panet to put in a, a farm in a residential district, but it's gonna protect residences.
Yeah.
It's still protecting farm, that's the best way to do it. And then when, you know, the, the question is, in Mark's case, he's got a forever farm, but in the block, it creates things like what happens when Mark flips it and turns it into housing units and stuff like.
That, yeah, that should be covered.
But at least we have the five to start with.
Yeah.
We have five to start with.
Oh, yeah.
Is that also covering, the quote, unquote, animal husbandry?
Uh, that's a, um.
I'm just saying.
Yes, that would deal with the animal husbandry for commercial farms. Where everybody else, it's still gonna be five animals until such time that we wanna take that one out again.
Like animals or animal units?
We.
Animal units, I'm sorry, animal units. It's still stupid, it's still a very stupid standard, but. It, I mean, it's like walking into a country.
We aren't gonna, we aren't gonna follow the Ags of May, are we?
It's a unit, it's a.
How we got thrown all onto that?
We're going to let this, uh, Shepherd, attorney Shepherd lead you.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
We'll let him take.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, uh, we already, when Donna was here, we talked about that, or rabbits.
I'm sorry, I don't wanna think about.
Me neither, I totally, I totally agree, it's giving me.
But I, I think this, this gives us.
A start.
A good start.
Well, those are five good ones.
I agree with Rich, we'll probably be still slugging around in conservation, in rural conservation district, again, there.
Yeah, we might be, but everything else that's on this list is reasonable.
Yeah, let's just get it done.
So when we come back and we begin tackling these things, we should, we should all bring our sections of the ordinance. So that manhole hole, we should probably go right in our binders, and that way we have it.
Well, what we probably should do is get you all new binders, and we'll just, and you put all the stuff that we're working on in that binder, and it should be a land use ordinance binder.
Okay.
For the efforts we're gonna be doing, so when you come, we're gonna be doing this.
Yeah, and we're gonna need the, yeah.
Bring your binder.
Bring, bring the right binder.
Bring the right binder, it'll be different color, okay? I promise, we'll get colored binders.
Oh.
The subdivision binders opposed to the land use ordinance binder, well, actually both, in this one.
Yeah, I, I have both of them in mind, I have a street, street design in mind.
I don't have the street design.
Do you guys need the street design, does it, didn't I give you the street design? I didn't?
Oh, I'm saying, I'm saying no, and I don't.
You don't want?
Don't wanna, yes, don't get it anywhere near me.
I vote for pink.
I've got an orange on some place.
You voted for pink, okay, that needs to be unanimous on the board. I wanna vote on that.
I wanna be pink.
I haven't heard a second.
Orangey colored.
Corinne, Corinne's not allowed to say it, I was gonna say, Corinne could be salmon.
She's in the back room. Four members missing, and Corinne takes her place.
Deputized Corinne.
I think two inches is probably what, what we should do.
These are one, right? I think two inches.
The edge that's.
Happy for your peanut butter.
The rings, separate rings, I hate them.
To the chair, we move on to the others?
That was others.
That was, well, I guess.
Well, is there, is there other others?
Is there any other business that the planner has for us?
That we need to know about? How's, uh, Runle Mas, uh, Machine doing?
They're doing fine, too.
I haven't seen a lot, because of the weather, or?
Um, they're going, they're getting certain sections, um, they're working through fire marshal, got some separation stuff they're taking care of. But they're, 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 all the site works, I'm pretty much.
Yeah.
I haven't been out on inspections, uh, site inspections, I should check before they button up the season. I haven't heard from our, from any of our other, I did have a meeting with Walter Woods yesterday, um, regarding the, um, the project. He, he wanted to get going, and he called my new money. He, he signed these mylaws, uh, he's a new guy, he hasn't registered, my new money. He, I said, he's already flagged out his cutting areas, I said, you're getting cut, you know, but you cannot cut within the, the flagged areas. Actually, Walter left today for, on vacation, but I talked to him, I talked to Jason. Let's see what else, I haven't had anything more from the guy as a black dog.
Black dog.
That's the family way that they do it.
Oh, yeah, okay. How about, how about today's, uh, staff thing, how did that go?
Well, fuck, he got his approval, he actually wants to stand.
Yeah.
He's, he's in, he got his, he got his approval from you guys, there was a confusion, he didn't come and ask to be scanned, Steve was gonna, there was a mix-up, Steve, we thought he, he got his approval at a meeting, and I said, no, they told you specifically, go to Stafford, Stafford review committee. For that, you know, to get that, that final meeting, you remember that? I said, go get it from Stafford, and they took it from Stafford. And they didn't do that, and just moved in, and he said, yeah, I wanna volunteer, cause I wanna make some changes, and, yeah. So, we took care of that confusion, we gave it to him, he gave me the, uh, the approval today, so.
Do we have to sign this too?
I talked to Sam Lynch, and Sam Lynch is, Sam Lynch, uh, is, uh, is very excited about it, and he's willing to, uh, talk to them about access on his road, so we, they have that, all that back portion that goes back to West Rock.
Yeah.
And so he was pleased to hear about that. He's gonna be, uh, putting more expansion in there, and he also showed me a design today, and showed Jim and I the design for, he's gonna be putting a bump out, with a formal entry. So he is, he is moving like Abe Busters. He also showed me a new skill, um, saw, that works on batteries.
Oh, yeah.
I haven't seen that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a, it's, it's a paper cutter saw, I mean, it's a granite cutter saw.
Yeah.
On batteries.
Yeah.
Pretty cool, I didn't know, I hadn't heard about the chainsaw, but the paper cutter, I mean, that's a diamond saw, I didn't know.
All right, you guys.
Need higher F M S. I was impressed, so I learned it. You know what I'm gonna buy? Oh, twenty-three, I'm gonna get a.
Oh, Raymond.
Or Raymond.
Uh, is that gas?
So, keep buying, you know.
This was the house.
Well, I buy a lot of that, because I like, I get terribly sick of spines and just.
Oh, my bad, I forgot about that.
So, I, that's what I do now, like, A T D, Humvee L, that's what I go in.
It got important, I had to bring the cars every single time. I'm tired of it. Shouldn't do this part.
I, I ended up in the doghouse over Oak Ridge, but I assume that worked out okay.
What's up?
Over, um, Mike Neto.
No, Mike keeps coming in every day.
Oh, but didn't his attorney call you to complain?
Who's attorney?
Mike Neto's.
Oh, yeah.
And so what was the end result, you haven't read his email yet, when I was in your office.
Uh, it said, uh, no.
What was his, what was his continuing?
My, my concern though, the plan would.
It shouldn't be a broken project, probably.
Right, and we didn't give him adequate hearing.
And we didn't give him adequate hearing, I basically told him that, um, essentially.
You don't hear his.
Yeah, like a fourth meeting, or a third meeting, I finally said, I didn't give him a year.
On both of those.
So what's the point?
There were two there.
What's the end, yeah, what's your goal?
Yeah, there's two there in, in that mylaw.
Which is, which, I mean, ultimately.
And all that, what I also.
You want to know.
And I'm paying about you, so I can give you that.
Is that everything, that's, everybody's sign, right?
Those are signed.
And it was late, yeah. Well, and that, and we need to be.
Got them all, Rich?
The whole thing.
Good.
That was done, the C D S is all done, that's the end.
You had the more portrait of product.
Well, and Jason was really excited to do was move everything around, to make him.
I thought he made a lot of.
He made a lot of changes, I thought he was really good. I thought he did too, I thought, you know, they really wanted this.
He's gonna show up here tonight.
Who?
Mike Neto.
I thought he was gonna show up to complain about something.
Oh, well, he's a, he's a, I don't know, or something, is he?
He's what?
Skewer. He's a what? S C U skew, special carry unit or something.
Oh, yeah, he is, actually.
Oh, is a registered nurse?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that why he was in scrub?
Yes.
Oh, I get it now.
He does work in the.
Okay.
Alright, so we have, where's, I got Oak Ridge, okay. Everybody signed the, uh, the findings and facts, right?
I'm sorry, what, say that again?
Nobody's signed, signed.
There were some signatures, and you, I signed them, rustled about.
I don't think I.
Have you shared that I, I put the signature page on top, should we?
Did I say?
Yes, you should.
Let's discuss.
You had, are you, pull out your signatures, where you had them.
I was thinking about that too, maybe that's, maybe that's me and Mark.
What, so what do you want?
Well, cause then I don't know, a- after that.
Well, I have to.
You took it, you took it, okay.
When's the baby due? April twenty-second, yeah, you don't really notice, cause I wear big things.
Wasn't that, wasn't that the issue that you, we hired you?
Yeah, I was exceptionally, exceptionally pregnant when I first started. I worked in Dad's office like, hi, maybe it's the board.
So this is not the one.
I was basically like.
She had to talk me into it.
I know, I'm not even close.
It was, but I didn't sign.
It was like, oh, here you go.
Yeah, and I want you guys to three form this one.
I'll give you the first.
Cause I don't have letter, I don't have, uh, lines on it, but three form it anyways.
I got it.
Rich, I need to run, can we officially adjourn?
Absolutely.
I must so move.
We'll adjourn.
Second.
Alright, sorry, I gotta.
Eight thirty-one. Alright, while you guys are signing.
I wasn't here for Oak Ridge, so.
Okay.
Alright, sorry about that, guys, I'll.